This is the mayor and council special meeting. This special meeting of the mayor and council of Borough Highlands is called pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law. Notice has been transmitted to the Asbury Park Press, Two Rivers Prime, and by posting at the Borough Highlands Municipal Building and website, and filing with the Borough Clerk all on November 24, 2021. This agenda is complete to the except no, no formal action will be taken at this council meeting. Council may limit repetitive comments and may limit the time or number of questions or comments from any one citizen to ensure an orderly meeting and allow adequate time for members of the public to be heard. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation of God, in whose hope we believe and justice for all.
We're doing roll call. Councilmember Martin. Not here. Councilmember Vazola. Not here. Um, councilmember Velnik.
Here.
Council President Piszczewski. Here. Mayor Brula. Here. Oh, we have a form. Today's discussion item is just the property valuation in Highlands. It's a public information meeting. Um, but I hand it over to you, Mayor.
Yes, and with that, I will hand this over. I called this meeting because everybody knows that the assessments went off a great deal. It's roughly sixteen, sixteen and a half percent or something in that, in that vein. Jay will go through all of the particulars. Because it was such a big jump on last year's number and the assessments, I wanted to have an informational meeting where people could become more educated about how the process works and to be able to ask some questions, some general questions of our tax assessment. And with that, I introduce Jay Bruce-Bone.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all. Hopefully, you all hear me?
I don't think it was my turn.
Better. Hopefully tonight, I can ease some of your concerns, I can answer most of your questions, and I can explain what this process we're really trying to accomplish. Um, I'm going to go through the outline pretty much as it is, um, and then we'll take questions afterwards. I have some questions prepared that a lot of people have asked already. Uh, we'll go through those first and then I'll take questions from the public. I don't think it's advisable for me to answer questions directly about your properties. So there's a sign up sheet here and I'd be happy to meet with you individually on those properties. So the big question is, how did we get here? And this is all my opinion, you know, why are we physically here? Uh, there's a couple of things that have come together to cause, um, the concerns and the assessment increases. I think the first of those is New Jersey has some of the highest property taxes in the country, obviously. The Tax Foundation has New Jersey, Illinois, and New Hampshire listed as the three top states. Kiplinger has the least friendly states, Illinois, Michigan, Nebraska, and New Jersey is number eight. That's one thing that's on people's minds. None of us want to pay any more taxes. Two, we're in a program called the Monmouth County Assessment Demonstration Program. And what that does is requires municipalities to do annual reassessments at fair market value. And the thought behind it is to promote fair and equitable assessments. Um, the ADP has been in place for eight years. The borough was initially in the program in the beginning, opted out for a few years, and then got back in, I believe it was in 2019. Um, in addition to that, we are in one of the hottest real estate markets of all time. I've been doing this over thirty years. I've never seen a market like that, like this. If there's any Realtors in the audience, they would probably tell you the same thing. The reasons for that are historically low mortgage rates, limited supply of listings, and the pandemic-related shift in population from urban areas to, to most suburban areas, but particularly for us, the shore areas. Highlands' location on the waterfront, affordable real estate, and the ferry service to New York are a huge draw, and I don't have to tell you, the town is extremely hot. So back to number, to number one, that we have the highest tax rates in the country, people are legitimately concerned. People come into my office all the time, and whether they're residents that have been here all their lives, wondering, am I going to be able to stay in my home? Or people that are moving here that haven't been told that if you pay $600,000, chances are your assessment is going to eventually reach $600,000. And some of those weren't anticipating that, that that was going to happen, and they would have problems meeting their monthly expenses. Back to the hot, to number three, one of the hottest real estate markets of all time, I checked before tonight's meeting, there are currently only five single-family homes active on the market on MLS in Highlands. There's only four condos for sale. There's seventeen properties pending or under contract, and none of those is listed under the assessed value. So think about that for a minute. Not one of those properties listed or under contract is, um, at a value that's, uh, lower than the assessment. In 20,000, in September 2019, there were six months of inventory. As of today, there's less than two months of inventory. The other issue is how is this Assessment Demonstration Program affecting us? We were given guidance, all the assessors in Monmouth County, I think there's only four towns that aren't, uh, a part of this program. So we were given guidance by the county board that due to the significant appreciation over the last two years, that our sales ratio studies should result in a ratio of sales to assessments between ninety-nine and one hundred and three percent on a two-year study. And on a one-year study, that number should be between ninety-eight and a hundred and two percent. So now we'll go to the outline. Um, again, the county has been, uh, experiencing unprecedented appreciation. Residents from North Jersey, Philadelphia, New York are taking advantage of, uh, low mortgage rates, and, um, the effect of the pandemic, uh, is causing a wave of people to come, come to suburban areas. Again, the surge in market prices is, is only fueled by the supply and demand issues. So this, this is going to be on the website, but I looked at some statistics. The median, uh, condo price in Highlands went from at ten one twenty, which is our valuation. They were always valuing property, uh, in October of the pre-tax year. So as of October one twenty-one, we're valuing property for 2022. So in, uh, twenty-one, uh, in ten one twenty, the average condo price was two hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred. In, uh, October of twenty-one, it went up to three hundred and forty-two thousand, which was a twenty-one percent increase. The, uh, average, uh, single-family home in ten one twenty was half a million dollars. In, uh, ten one twenty-one, it was six hundred and nine thousand dollars. So how does, how does the, the assessments affect your property taxes? They're, they're two totally different, um, different things. I have nothing to do with, with, uh, tax rates or budgets. The assessment position is essentially to attempt to value property through a mass appraisal technique, um, at market value. So the prime purpose of assessing is to establish equitable and accurate values, not set tax rates. Um, and when property values are uniformly set to the same standard, which in the county is one hundred percent of value, so whether you're here, whether you're in Belmar, whether you're buying in Oceanport, Long Branch, the same system is in place. If you, if you're buying, the chances are you're going to be assessed at that sale price in one or two years. So again, no control over any of the levies. Uh, and the, effectively, the county municipal and school budget costs are what determine the amount of property taxes that need to be collected. Uh, and a municipality's general rate basically is calculated by dividing the total dollar amount that needs to be matched by budget, uh, by the net valuation of the taxable real estate. I'm on to the second page. So the, the county tax rate, the municipal part of the budget, uh, is just a portion of the tax rate. If you look, I outlined the eighteen through twenty-one, uh, breakdown of the Highlands' certified, um, tax levy. So there's three, four portions of the county budget. County purposes, county library, county health budget, county open space. When you get to Highlands, it's Highlands', uh, Highlands', well, the schools, Highlands' local school, Highlands' regional school, which is Henry Hudson. Then we come to the municipal portion, Highlands Municipal, Highlands Open Space. So that totals about forty-six percent in 2021 of the entire, uh, budget. And for that, um, for that portion, the borough was providing, uh, municipal services, including fire, police, uh, first aid, uh, municipal services. Um, so anyone that generally comes into my office and we break out what services are, are you're getting for the municipal portion, no one seems to think that, that that's an outrageous amount. But again, it's only forty-five percent of the budget. Um, for the, uh, and again, the tax rate is calculated by dividing the total tax levy over the net taxable value. So our taxable value went in, uh, 2019 from six hundred and twelve thousand, uh, six hundred and twelve million, three sixty. To next year, uh, it's going to be eight hundred and ninety-two thou, eight hundred and ninety-two million, six hundred and thirteen. I, I would expect in 2023, with the building that's going on and the ratables that are coming online, that we're going to be approaching a billion dollars in ratables. Our ratable base went up, um, sixteen point seven percent from seven sixty-four, seven hundred and sixty-four million, eight eighty-six, to the eight ninety-two, six thirteen. Um, and, and again, the rate, uh, the rate for 2021 was two point four eight one. So towns can't just say, well, we have a hundred million dollars more in ratables, we're going to, excuse me, collect that money and put it in a, a pot. Their budgets are capped at, at pretty close to two percent. The mayor can probably, you know, verify that, but I think, I looked at the budgets from two thousand, uh, 2019 to 2022, and the average increase was, was about three point two percent. So if all things were equal and the assessments went up sixteen percent, then the rate is going to go down less the, whatever it is, the two percent increase in the budgets. Uh, so the annual assess, I'm on the next page now. The, the annual assessments, how is that different from what we did in the past? So in the past, towns did revaluations, and they did those revaluations generally when the ratio of assessment to market value fell below, uh, seventy percent. That usually was a five to seven-year period, depending upon what kind of appreciation. If that, if we were in that system in this environment, you'd probably have to do a, a revaluation within three years, I would think, just because the numbers are increasing, you know, phenomenally. So that, what did that do? That costed down a lot of money to do, uh, to do a revaluation. There were only a few companies that did those. They didn't do them very well. And you're basically stuck with this, with the static information and static assessments that were created. A town like Woodbridge and Middlesex County, I believe their ratio was under twenty percent, twenty percent of, of market value, but their tax rate is probably ten dollars per hundred or so. So either way, if the, if the assessments are low, the rate's going to be high. If the, if the ratable base is high, then the tax rate is going to be lower. What happens when you, when you wait seven years or ten years, or in those cases like Union County and Middlesex County, um, the variant from, from the mean gets further and further apart. And the class differences, um, while residential property appreciates at a higher rate, up until this year, commercial property didn't. So the shift, when you do a revaluation, goes from the commercial base to the residential base, and the residential wind up with a big swing in taxes and a dis, kind of a disproportionate amount compared to what they were paying. This program takes that out of the equation. So we're assessing all property on an annual basis. Uh, we're looking at sales over two years. Every fall, I look at the multiple, uh, Monmouth County multiple listing. I look at listings, I look at sales, I look at properties under contract, and we try to make changes to the role to reflect, uh, market value. This program received numerous awards from, um, Moody's Investor Service, the Harvard Kennedy School, and the International Association of Assessing Officers. So it has shown that it saves money, it's ultimately more equitable, um, and it, it, it allows you to make changes to the property relatively quickly. So if we're at the end of a high appreciation cycle and things downturn, then we're going to be able to react in the next year by changing assessments the other way. Um, that's, that and also not having appeals, more so in a, in a town with a high degree of commercial property, where, where they file appeals and the appeals sit for three or four years, and then they get decided by a court and the county, and the town has to pay significant amount of refunds, which a lot of them have to, have to reserve for. Uh, that doesn't happen in this system. So that's what I have to say about the program and where we are. I compiled, uh, a list of questions that a lot of people ask when they come into the office, so I figured this may take away some of the questions that you have, and if it doesn't, then I'm here to take, you know, other questions.
Can I tell my Monmouth County questions, you have, if you're on the watch these and this?
Okay, can I?
What is on?
It's on, yeah. I can move it closer if that helps.
You can move it.
Okay. Um, why are my third and fourth quarter tax bills different from my first and second? So that also comes into play when you get your, um, new assessment cards, which are out. So while that assessment is on the books as of January, as of January first, 2022, it's not going to affect your bills until August of 2022. The first and second quarters are always estimated based on the existing rate and the, um, and the existing assessment. So the example that I did, if your taxes were changing from twelve to fourteen thousand, the first two quarters are billed based on the existing assessment and rate, they would be three thousand a quarter, or three thousand a quarter. So fourteen thousand, which is going to be the total tax rate established when the new rate is struck, which is usually in May or June, less the six thousand that you paid leaves eight thousand dollars to be paid, split over the last two quarters. The second question is, uh, I understand that we are reassessing every year. Does that mean my assessment will change for next year? Most likely, it will change. This year, just given the appreciation that I've outlined, it was a significant change. However, based on the data that, that I read to you, it appears that we're still below market value. If seventeen and eight, uh, twenty-five properties that are currently under contract or listed are selling for more than the assessments, the logic is that our assessments are, are low, and it's essentially because this market is, is, the supply and demand issues are causing, uh, such turmoil in the markets and such volatility that appraisers can't keep up with it, assessors can't keep up with it, Realtors can't keep up with it. It will change. I mean, we're, we always experience cycles, we're at the top of a, a cycle. It will change. But generally, what I tell people is that we're at a point where we've reached a base in the assessment, unless you're doing improvements, uh, demolitions, uh, new homes, uh, we're at a base and assessments are most likely going to increase incrementally, and you're going to see a decrease in the rate. This town is slightly different in that there's a lot of, um, I'm very positive on, on Highlands, and I think good things are happening. I think the ratable base is going to increase substantially over the next few years. I think the rate will stabilize and come down, but that's my opinion. That's not any, um, any council opinion. That's just me seeing what's happening and looking at this, you know, as an appraiser. So that, the next question follows, um, follows the one about reassessing every year. Does that necessarily mean I'm going to pay more taxes? No, it doesn't. If the town is going up, uh, it used to be the rule of thumb in revaluations was that a third of the people went up, a third of the people went down, a third of the people stayed the same. That was kind of more of a, a wise tale, but it, it was effective in, in what was happening. If you're, if the assessments went up thirty percent and you were at that thirty percent, well, you were going to be pretty close, depending upon where the rate was struck, relative was going up, one and a half percent was it going up, two percent was it going up, three percent. If you were over that thirty percent, you probably were going to see an increase. If you were under that thirty percent, you were going to see a decrease. The same happens in this. Uh, not all, all, you know, property appraisal is an estimate of value, it's not an exact science, it has a lot of subjectivity to it, and especially when you're doing mass appraisal, there, there are, um, errors that are made, and they may be errors based on the fact that we didn't see the inside of the house and our data is, is not accurate. So if any of you are, are concerned that, that your house is grossly over assessed or there are issues, there's remedies to fix that. And if there's mistakes, we're going to fix them. I mean, that, it's not like, uh, it's not like I'm an egomaniac and I said your property's worth five hundred and that's it. I mean, legitimately, if there's mistakes, that's what we're here to do. We're here to fix them, and I'll do my best, um, you know, to do that. Uh, so if, because your assessments went up, it doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going to go up. The tax rate will go down. I can assure you that it will go down. Where it goes and how far it goes, there's a lot of, you heard me read the ten components of the rate. There's a lot of factors that go into it, and no one knows what it's going to be right now, but as the budgets start getting prepared, they'll have an idea of what's going to happen, but it will go down. So you should definitely not multiply your new assessment times the old rate. Uh, my house was recently inspected. What was the purpose of that inspection? So as part of the Assessment Demonstration Program, which is the program we're in, the Division of Taxation has established rules, and, uh, the rules are part of the legislation, that all homes have to be inspected, um, once every five years. So the whole town would have to be inspected over five years. We're trying to do twenty percent of that. In this town, that's particularly, excuse me, important because number one, the damage from Sandy, that number one affected our hard copies of data, in fact, it destroyed them. Um, two, um, a lot of adjustments were made to the properties because of the damage to Sandy. Three, a lot of the older homes weren't renovated and were demolished, and new construction is being built. So in order for this to work, it's never going to work perfectly, but in order for it to work, um, on a basis that, that is, um, you know, a quality product, we need our data to be good. So there's one, essentially one company doing this called RDS, so we subcontract our, um, inspection program to them. They're not appraisers, uh, all they are is data collectors, so it's kind of important that you, you, and you don't have to let people in, and especially during the pandemic, I wouldn't let somebody in, but they've found ways to do this, um, with phones, uh, virtual inspection, so they're changing with the times in it, and it's beneficial. If you have, and I urge all of you to, there's, there's, uh, we'll get to it later, but I've listed, um, website, and you can call and get your, a copy of your property record card. You should make sure that it's correct. We have you down for three bathrooms and you have two, that causes your assessment to be lower. If you haven't renovated your house in thirty years, that causes the condition to be, um, to, for you, causes the condition to be, uh, less than normal and causes greater depreciation, which results in a lower number. So things like that are important, and you should take advantage of the fact that, you know, you can just call and get a copy of that. Um, so that's the purpose of, of the inspection. Um, the other one, I wasn't home, what do I do? You can call me. Um, you can get a copy of the records from me, and if you want me to come out and do it, uh, I can do it, or I can put your name on a list for the inspectors to, uh, come out. They're probably going to start sometime in February for the next twenty percent. Number six is how is the appraisal process done? So once this data, it comes into us, we, we, um, kind of purge the system of bad data. So, uh, depreciation factors that were left in place from Sandy, uh, perhaps, you know, the house was renovated, any changes to the physical, uh, condition of the home result in changes to the assessment. So I, starting probably in September, we look at, um, the sales that have taken place in town. Again, I look at MLS to, um, see what the, what the listings are and what the trends are, if the market is still appreciating. I look at properties under contract, you know, around that time, because that's, you know, very, uh, very important, and the most recent sales, excuse me. Uh, and then each neighborhood is looked at on an individual basis. There's a land component and a building component. If you were to file an appeal, they don't want to hear that my land is okay, and, but I don't like the building value. The land and the building portion are really more of an administrative function. So if you're appealing your assessment at four hundred thousand dollars, you're appealing the whole assessment. You're not, they're not going to allow you to, um, you know, just... You're not, they're not going to allow you to, you know, just separate the land and the building. And while we're on that, they're not going to listen to my taxes are too high. I mean, it's, we'd want you to go to Freehold, well, you don't have to go to Freehold anymore because the new system allows you not to have to go, to do it virtually, to do it just on the papers, but they don't want to hear my taxes are high. They want to hear, is your assessment equitable, or is your assessment not equitable? And what do I do if I feel my 2022 assessment does not reflect the fair market value? I would make an appointment to come and see me. I would get a copy of the property record card to make sure that it is accurate, and I would say I'm very easygoing and easy to deal with, and if there's an issue, I said, you know, we'll resolve it. If there's an error, you know, I'm here to fix it. If you're still not happy, then you always have the right to go to the county. That appeal has to be filed by January fifteenth. If your house is assessed at over a million dollars, or commercial property is assessed at over a million dollars, you have until April first to go to the tax court. Commercial properties going to the tax court have to be filed by an attorney. I've listed two websites, you know, one to get onto the county portal, that you can do the appeals online. It's, to me, it's a very easy process. And the other one is the Monmouth County website, which allows you to search for comparables if you don't have access to someone that could give you multiple listings. If there's any realtors out there, they're probably not going to want to hear this, but if you have a realtor that's a friend you met, want to ask them for comps, or to do a CMA, a comparative market analysis, if that shows me that the assessment doesn't, is not representative of market value, then I would make the change. And the last one, before I take your questions, my neighbor completed a renovation, addition, added a second story, et cetera, but his assessment hasn't changed. Why is that? So it could be for a number of factors, but generally, our process for picking up new construction, renovation, any of, any home improvements, besides general repairs, we're not assessing for siding, we're not assessing for roof repairs, we don't assess for landscape, we don't assess for driveways, we don't assess, if you're replacing a deck that was existing with a new deck or not, that's not considered an added assessment, and added assessment is considered something that adds value to the property over and above what was there before. So once the building, once we get the permits, we're looking at those to determine, are there something that adds value? And then when the permits are closed and/or the property is deemed substantially complete, it doesn't really need a final CO. That's not the law, so we're looking at substantially complete. We're going out during the summer months usually, and looking at these properties and adjusting them for whatever the work was done. That assessment is prorated over the time the work was complete, so if it was done in June, it's generally picked up the month after for the remainder of the year. You're getting a bill for that in October, and you have until December first to appeal that added assessment. In addition, the program that we're in, the ADP, has these annual inspections, so if we miss something on that and we're let in, we generally are able to pick up anything that was missed. So again, over five years, we're going to try to do a hundred percent inspections. I would think with the virtual process, we're going to be able to do more, because I think people will be more willing to do it virtually. If there are situations where someone doesn't get a permit, then we're probably not, not going to see the inside of the house unless a neighbor tells us, which they do, which we're appreciative of. And it might be picked up during this twenty percent inspection. But one other question that I get on the twenty percent inspections, if my house is inspected, is am I getting reassessed? Well, everybody's getting reassessed, so it doesn't matter that you're in the twenty percent number. All that is, is us doing our due diligence and complying with the legislation that allows us to do these annual reassessments in the assessment demonstration program. And I think that's about it for what I have, so I'll open it up to questions, and I think you're going to have to state your name and your address when you ask the question. Is that right, or you want to?
That is, yes, that's correct. So I would say anybody that came in late, there's the very informative pamphlet that Jay put together, and it's over there on that table. So before you ask a question, you might want to pick up a copy of this and glance through it, because it will, it may answer your question. But yes, if anyone has a question, you can come up and go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and then we can address it.
Yes, no.
I can, but.
Is the light on? Is the light on?
Yeah. That was on. Okay, I'll back up.
Even I can't hear, can you?
All right.
Your name and address.
Name is Christian Bacher, Lubbock, Lubbock, Anne Marie Place. The question is, when do you know, when will we know what the tax rate is?
The tax rate generally is struck in May, right? I think May, June?
Yes.
I mean, if you're interested, I would probably go to the budget meetings that, you know, take place when they discuss, and you'll be able to get some type of framework as to, you know, where it's heading, I believe.
And then the second question is on this, pages are not?
Guide number.
They're not numbered, but I would say second, they're back of the second page. The percent increase is what we're looking at the valuation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we'll just have to talk, because I'm, every year over year, I'm more than that, and I just want to know why.
You're more than the sixteen percent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, like I said, not, we're not going through and hitting everyone by sixteen percent. Neighbor?
No, but that's, that's a general.
That's a general, so the neighborhoods are different, and you do, I mean, I don't want to get into individually.
Right, right now.
I'd be happy to talk to you, but if it's over sixteen, then I would, I would discuss it. It could be because you've done renovations recently, it could be because it was virtually inspected and they fixed up something, it could be.
I've done renovations, but the companies are still open, because I'm still in construction.
Okay, so again, it depends, so they don't, it depends on where you are in that process. So when I get cards, this is, this is a good question. So when I get cards back from the companies that's out there, they will estimate not ready for an added assessment, so that means you're not going to get an added assessment in 2021, but remove the depreciation, the not finished portion for 2022. So they're telling me for 2022, it's going to be done, based on what they see. That may or may not be the case for you, but your permits may have, may have been picked up, they may have been estimated. I don't know, but I would put your name on the list.
I did, I did, because if it's, if it's that, and I'm like, okay, I'm okay with it, if it's not, then because if it, it'll go add on to what the addition was.
Yes.
And then, then I'm really upset.
Now, I, again, something like that, I would definitely, I, again, everyone should look at their property record card. That's an inventory that we're basing the assessment on. If it's wrong, your assessment is likely.
So percentage-wise, I'll just give you, and so percentage-wise, from nineteen to twenty-one, it's been thirty-two percent increase.
On your house, or? I mean.
Or a little more.
Generally, there's, there's reasons for it. It doesn't happen, generally, there's reason, but without saying it, I can't tell you the reason, but I'd be happy to.
All right, so I put my name on there, and thank you for taking my question.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Don Kruger, with a one scenic drive apartment five oh eight in Highlands. This is a bit of a technical question, but I'm looking at the Highland single family for 2021, and I see that the average and the median are substantially different, so that the average home increased by twenty, almost twenty-two percent, and the median home increased only two percent, which suggests that there must be some very expensive homes that are being built and which, they're assessed in Highlands right now. And the average and the median home, half are higher and half are lower, it's hardly moved. Does that suggest perhaps then that the valuation is skewed much higher, because you have a limited number of sales, certain number of sales, but a very high prices? So it really doesn't reflect the price of the average home here in Highland, so that the average home is not being properly reassessed because of the skewing for the very expensive homes?
That's a good question, and I put that in only for informative purposes. I look at that, you know, as a general, okay, where is the market going? And the mean is usually, I don't know if it's more accurate, but I think the average can skew, skew the number by having what you said, higher value homes in there. But the answer to your question is no. So when we're looking at East Point? We're looking at East Point, I'm only looking at East Point. So I'm only looking at the sales in East Point, I'm looking at the under contracts, I'm looking at the listings. Obviously, the water side is more valuable than the west side, the higher the units up to a point are valued more, but we're not going outside of that complex to value the property.
Well, actually, I'm looking not at the condos, but at the single family homes. Condos, it doesn't seem to be so skewed. But if I'm looking at the single family homes, so I live in a condo, but I'm not talking about my condo, I'm talking about a single family home. If you have five, five million dollar homes being built in Highlands, and that's eighty percent of the total market activity in Highlands, that's going to skew dramatically higher because the other, worth of two thousand homes in Highlands are not that expensive, but those are the ones that are on the market, those are the ones that you're using for your valuation, so it's going to dramatically raise the valuation of those properties.
I would, I would again, you know, respectfully disagree, only because we're looking, we're breaking the town up into neighborhoods. We're looking at the sales within those neighborhoods to judge the value. And I will say, in this marketplace, new is gold, and it's not, it's not just the Highlands marketplace, it's the entire marketplace. There are builders here, and I'm sure they would tell you that they don't have problems selling new construction. I mean, new construction is what younger people want, they don't want to do any work, they don't want to turn the key, walk in the door, and be done. And whether it's this town, whether it's Little Silver, whether it's Freehold, that's, that's the case across the board. But back to your question, we're looking at individual neighborhoods, and the difference in the land is separately assessed, but there's a base lock value for each area, and then the size of the house is determinative of how high the assessment goes. So a six, four thousand square foot new home is not going to be compared to a one, six hundred foot fungible, they're different from animals. So we're, we're comparing apples to apples, or we're trying to.
So just, just finally, does it seem unusual to you that there should be such a difference between the average and the median for the single?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a reason for it, and I can get to it, but I'm kind of a little busy now, so I don't have the time to drill down on that, but you're, I mean, I saw that myself, and I say, well, someone's going to ask a question on that, but.
Okay, well.
I don't have to answer.
Okay, well, appreciate your time on that, thank you.
Hi, Andrea Kirby, Madison Square, One Porter Road. So we have twenty-four units there, we're all equal, but we have a very different tax bill, so I was wondering, how did that happen?
So I'm not, off the top of my head, I don't have, you know, I can't recite Madison Square like I, I was a little more familiar with the East Point, but generally, square footage and conditions, so there's a difference between, again, we're trying to emulate the market. So there are condos that have been totally gutted and are going to sell for more money, and there are condos that haven't been touched in thirty years. That could be one of the factors.
Yeah.
I'd have to, again, I'd have to look at those, and again, it's, condos to me are much easier to do because you're staying within the complex. We're trying to keep them uniform, but at the same time, if someone spends eighty thousand dollars to gut one, then, you know, the fair and equitable thing is that they should pay more taxes because they're going to get more money, and our basis is market value. Now, the hardest, the harder thing is for us to know which ones are and which ones aren't.
Right, because I moved here 2015, and since then, a lot of them got, you know, they've just bought, completely renovated, and they have been last taxes.
Yes. So that's the, again, the inspection process and the permitting. Sometimes they're not getting permits to do these because they can do them relatively quickly. I would think that's happening less and less, but I do still see it.
So my question is to come and speak with you, and?
Yes, I would look at yours individually, and we can go over how the complex was, was valued. I mean, they're not going to be, you know, generally, I don't know there if there's different, there's two different models, is it one bedroom and two bedroom?
They're all the same, same square footage?
Yeah. They should be assessed similarly, so.
I would think so, thank you.
Thank you.
Pauline Jennings, twenty-seven Wall Street. Thank you for doing this, it's brilliant, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I had one question, and maybe I've done wrong. Can you explain, you spoke about only twenty percent of the properties have been inspected?
No.
Did I hear wrong?
Uh, no, it's a, it's a hard con, it's one of those questions we get a lot. So as part of this, this assessment demonstration program was, I guess, put into legislation after it was a pilot. So as part of the legislation, the Division of Taxation wants the inspections to be done on an annual basis and twenty percent per year. So one hundred percent of the properties should be inspected at the end of five years. Because they're inspected, that doesn't mean they're getting reassessed, because everybody is getting reassessed. That just means we're meeting the criteria that the state allows us to work through this program.
Okay, so if an inspection is done on year one, it's not necessary to do it as a year two?
No, and what we've done again until year six.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was my question.
Hi, Henry Turner, Ten Inches Brown New, thank you for doing this, we really do appreciate it. I think my question is, how do they pick who's getting inspected? Because you and I have talked over the years, my house has gone up fifty-seven percent in five years, and it had a huge increase this year. I wasn't home when they did the inspection, I don't know what the assumptions were, I didn't pull a permit, I didn't put one more penny into my house. As we talked about, you might not remember, but two years ago, when I came in, the people across the street from me, who have waterfront property. across the street from me, who have waterfront property, who have got renovated the entire house, were paying $5,000 in taxes, and I was paying $17,000. And you said that the permits hadn't caught up, but they'd done the work two or three years before I was in your office. So how is your office staying on top of making sure that you're seeing the permits, that fact, that other houses are being inspected than the same ones? I mean, I don't want to be inspected every single year, I want my neighbors to all be paying their fair share of taxes, and with this new assessment, you know, I could be paying over $25,000 in taxes, and people across the street from me, who have a nicer house on the water, are paying far. So how do you create the fairness over this time period? Because I'm not seeing it.
That is the purpose of this program, that we can, we can correct our database, and we can value the properties on a uniform and equitable basis. As far as, what we also did this year is, so, if I can digress.
Yeah, of course.
So on waterfront properties, obviously waterfront properties were substantially affected because of Sandy, and it took a long time for the, for the buyers in the market to return to waterfront property. The waterfront property was always, there's only so many waterfront properties, and they're always prime real estate. It took a while for, for the market to forget about Sandy, but I, I would say the market has forgotten. So there were, and there was additional depreciation put on some of the waterfront properties because of that, prior to, hey, it was on years ago. I've started to scale that back to very nominal numbers to try to, to try to emulate what the market is doing on the waterfront, which is exploding basically. But, I mean, it's not only exploding on the waterfront, it's, it's exploding everywhere. Now, back to, so those are the kind of data cleanup things we're doing. And back to your question.
So I guess my question is, we know that there are a lot of properties in town that have been completely renovated, or new homes built on the property, and the tax assessment doesn't reflect that. There was an empty lot kind of across me, a brand new house has been built on that, I think that's still an empty lot for the tax roll. So how do we touch up everybody instead of just a few people? Because I feel like I'm getting chosen every single year to get reassessed, but my neighbors across the street who live on the river are not being reassessed.
And I don't want to get into where it is, but I would say, I drove down a particular street with the tax man and looked at, looked at homes relative to the assessment, and there were some substantial changes made. I don't know if it's where you are. What I would say is, I, I don't, I don't know why it wasn't picked up, but there's two chances for us to do that. There's the permits that I'm getting, so if I'm not getting the permits, then, then I can't.
Well, they did the work more than five years ago, so it's more than five years they got renovated and lived with the house. And then they sold it two years ago for 1.1 million dollars, and I think we had on the tax roll for like 350,000.
I would.
Years after they got renovated. So I'm going to try to figure out like.
We can talk about that.
Yeah.
I'd be surprised, but I would come in and discuss the work.
We talked about it two years ago, so I'm happy to come back in and talk about it. I'm happy to have a fair share, I just don't want to pay a disproportionate amount of property taxes to my neighbors.
The objective of the, the whole process, to make sure you pay your fair share and no more, that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
All right, well, I put my name on the list, and maybe we could just look at the neighbors and see why they're not being assessed at Highland.
Okay. And the other issue is, I don't know why you would have been back-to-back years inspected, that doesn't.
After my, my tax, my property values gone up from.
No, no, I know that, but.
The number one, I built a brand new house five years ago, it's up 57, 56% in five years. Moving around me is up that much for also new built homes.
Uh, I'd be happy to look at that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. Laurie Egan, 8 Mountain Street. I have a question that's sort of specific to the hill, I think. I had a view when I went here 26 years ago that was magnificent, it's almost completely, completely destroyed by the trees below me. How much of my land assessment is proportionate to the view, if any? As you said, that landscape, the other things weren't necessarily affecting the overall building and land assessment. Is there a view tax essentially is what I'm asking, because my neighbors on either side have a better view now than I do, so finding a comparable house is impossible, and I had a better view originally, but I don't have anymore.
So we always, I mean, you always have to go back to the market. The market will generally tell you, if, if this street has a better view than this street, that street would sell for more. The next highest has, has a better view, then they would generally sell for more. So you always try to go back to the market, that's often difficult if there's not a lot of sales. Where you are, there haven't been as many sales as there have been down here, builders seem to be building more, you know, down here than, than they are there, although there are, there are some. So I would, if your view is different than it was when you bought that house.
100%.
I would put your name on that list, and we can go out and look. I mean, view, obviously, the views, one of the great things about Highlands is the views from the hills. I mean, it's, you know, I've been up there at times and, and just good looking, and I'm like, this is, you know, this is incredible. And I don't know whether it's better in the summer, better in the winter when the ice is blowing and the river and stuff, but, you know, it, it, it's one of the, you know, nice things about the town, but I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you, Jack.
To a.
Hi.
Hi.
Barbara Domings, 247 Bay Ave. I have a question about the land, because I have a lot, it's just land, and it's next to my house, the land, and the land prices, the, the numbers have always been different. And my land value in 2019 was 37.5, and this year it's 88,800. So how can that same piece of land that isn't doing anything, just sitting there, how are we giving, how is it getting so high so quickly?
So when, when was the first year you were talking?
Well, I think something happened in 19, because everything went down in 19, 2019. 2016 and seven, 16 and 17, it was 54.8, and 18, it was 54.8, 19, it went down to 37.5, 20, it was 73.5, 73.5, and 21, and now it's 88. Same piece of lot, nothing's been done to it.
So logically, would you, would you think, would you sell the property for the same today that you would have sold it for in 17? And the answer is going to be no.
Maybe not 17, but 19, 20, I mean, it, it just went up another 10% in one year. What happened?
I think, and, and this is a good, another good question for everybody, when properties appreciate, up until this year, it wasn't in the buildings. This year is, is skewed because lumber went up, siding, everything went up, so, so it's not a good year to make that argument. But when properties appreciate, the value, the increase is in the land. So the builders were buying properties five years ago for 40?
Well, apparently.
So the builders who built it were, there were a lot of foreclosures, there were sheriff sales, so the land was cheap.
Er, cheaper.
As, as the market took off, as Highlands became discovered, the land values have increased exponentially, obviously.
10% from last year to this year, and they didn't even start?
If I was doing an appraisal on, I'd be shocked if it was that low.
Barbara, Barbara, also something that, cause, and that you should take into consideration just from last year to this year, is that it's in the area of redevelopment. Does that really, that make a difference? Even though it hasn't been passed? Yes. But should that be reflected in here?
I would, I, again, it's an individual one, so I'd rather you and I just.
Well, yeah.
There should be.
I, I can, yes, but at this point, no, it's fine, I'm not talking about the empty land. I don't want you in my house now.
No, no, I, I don't blame you.
Barbara, you can still lay it down, so you can talk about the empty land.
Any other questions? No other questions? Well, thank you.
Does anyone at the table have anything they want to add, or have any questions themselves?
The only thing, the only thing I think about adding, just to keep in mind, and again, this number blew my mind when I first saw it, since 2015, 1,500 homes have changed hands in Highlands.
Homes are also commercial?
No.
Just residential?
Just residential, quit that's apartments, condos and whatever, 1,500. There's a big story in that.
That's how, half of our housing is done.
Since 2015, yep, yep.
But that was also a part of, I have to say.
Yes.
That a lot of, you know, distorted, uh, people, you know, it's.
Yep. It's rising tide, huh?
Don, do you have anything else you want to put in there? Okay, and then with that, I will make motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Sorry, Jim.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.